All right, for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're gonna make your move now. Welcome, everybody.
Morning.
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 Slow day. Our crowd's kind of all been too. All righty, well, look for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
Get additions. Okay, we got a first, second, all in favor?
Aye.
You oppose? Agenda is approved. Approve the minutes from October 6th.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
We have a first and a second, we're discussion on the minutes. Here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approve the claims.
I'm making motion to approve claims that $486,025.8.
One second it.
That'd be four eight six zero two five point zero.
All right, we have a first and a second, any more discussion of claims? Here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, claims are approved, outside of those, and to take them in. What you having? There's always more interest to get back.
Yeah.
I didn't know that. General public concerns. No one up on the screen, I don't think, nobody here. Jeff Young. All right, well, we want to Diana.
Here's my formal letter of resignation. And I guess we'll talk about, I see I'm down below for discussing about Nicole as my replacement, so.
Not now.
Well, you know what?
I would do it when we do the work session.
Yeah, probably.
Okay.
Is that fine with you, Diane?
That's perfect.
Okay. Um, thank you for your years. Guess you're not done yet, but. So, but thank you very much for your service to the county.
Yes.
I'd like to sign anything you have on?
I don't know if I have.
I probably should, just so it's. Recognize that we accepted it.
You're funny.
Thank you.
All right, well, Ben isn't here. Do you want to take a look out there and see if Ben shows up?
And there's my formal letter.
Oh, here's.
Oh, you got another one?
Yeah.
Gosh.
It says accept, and I was asked to do a letter of resignation, so there's my letter of resignation.
Well, hopefully that means he doesn't have an issue over there this morning.
Well.
But we can do the.
Well, we are awfully early.
Yeah.
He's on nine fifteen.
MMPs.
Um, yeah. There again, too, Sandy, I'm just give a few more days, so.
Yep.
Well, the big party later.
Big party.
All right.
Yeah, we say them as.
We have some manure management plans. All right, we have a whole bunch of them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have Humboldt, Bradgate, finisher site number five seven eight zero zero. Highway three, finisher site number six eight two eight one. Cold. Finisher Farm Site seven zero four five four. Nelson Brothers Site six four eight eight nine. Nelson Brothers Site two. Six seven four nine eight. And for a Bradgate Finisher Farm Site number five seven eight zero. There again, these are all manure management plans that they file every year with us.
Yep.
Um, if there's any changes at all, it has to go through the DNR and get redone.
Motion to accept all those numbers as stated.
One second it.
Any more discussion?
The last one was zero zero, five seven eight zero zero.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Is that what I said?
Used one zero, but that's.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Need to get that fresh.
Yes. Did we have a first and a second for? The, um, accept the resignation?
No, we did not.
No, I don't think we did do it.
No.
I actually did.
You didn't.
All right, let's finish our corner management plan first.
Sorry.
Do you have first and second on that?
Yes.
You screwed me up. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the manure management plans are approved.
Now, I'll back up and I'll do, uh, accept Diane and Sandy's resignation as of December 31st and November 15th.
I will second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Fine.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It's official.
It's official.
My district has already had, we had our last district meeting last week, so we already had a party for my retirement. It was kind of hard to come back to work. That's all I want.
All right, so we're down, down to. John Paulbert. John, he's on for earache because he's. I don't think he's here early. Jerry Sullivan is that early? Okay, let's do our committee reports.
Okay.
Was this, was the snowmobile thing supposed to be on here? Because there's a.
That's Ben's stuff.
That's Ben. I guess I'll try to get attention. Oh, yeah. No skimmers, there we go.
I know you're getting ready.
No, no pieces.
There's someone.
Oh, there's John.
Said he was looking for. Oh, John is here, maybe we'll just step right up to you then, John, if you're ready. Or you want to take a little break?
I can't be.
Okay, we just, just got down with the other stuff and was up. Get you on the road earlier today.
Yeah.
Drive up this morning?
Free day to be outside in Iowa.
Yeah.
Good morning, everyone. Talk about several things here, you know, I think most of you know that, um. The Drainage Administrator, Drainage Clerks Meet. Uh, every year during the annual meeting, they have a breakout session. Somebody approached us several years ago and said. You know, it'd really be great if we did that twice a year as opposed to once a year. Um, so we started having summer meetings for the Drainage Administrators. And this year we had our. Third one, I believe, in July. And, um. It's, it's sort of a strange meeting, we don't have an agenda. We just say, we're going to be there. So I go as executive director, Doug Striker, legal counsel. And Mona Bond is our lobbyist. And we said, you know, whatever you want to talk about, we're going to talk about. And. I was a little concerned at the first one, that, you know, was anybody going to show up? What are we going to talk about? Are we going to have anything to talk about? How are we going to fill three hours? And it really took off, and I, you know, I think we're at the point now where we might. Even be able to go for a longer period of time. And I think the Drainage Administrators really appreciated, I know. Specifically, they appreciate having Doug there. Um. And. Basically through his involvement with IDDA and the fact that we've had other. Longtime drainage attorneys that have retired. Uh, I would say that Doug is the preeminent drainage attorney in the state right now. Um, and he is, he has become the go-to guy on drainage. And to have. The Drainage Administrators to have three hours of his time uninterrupted. Uh, I know they really, I appreciate, I learn something every time I go. Um, so that, that has worked out very well, and we. We obviously are going to continue that, you know, I need to investigate whether. We want to make it a longer session. It becomes a little more complicated because then you probably involve a meal. Uh, when you, and then you're involving budget. Um, so that's something we need to look at. Um, so that's something we need to look at, but, but something we, we will consider.
Do they hold it in the Des Moines area, or where's?
It's in Fort Dodge.
It's in Fort Dodge?
Yeah. Same place we have the annual conference, that seems to be. A pretty good location for our membership.
Majority of northern, northern Iowa.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, and speaking of Fort Dodge, our annual meeting will be coming up on December fifth. Uh, our usual first Friday of December. Um, I do have the program. Put together for that. And I will have a newsletter out. Later this month, which will have the um. The, the program on the, on the registration, um, registration information, registration form. That, that's also in Fort Dodge.
The new event center or whatever.
Crossroads events, I have a hard time getting. And you know, one of the things we do at that meeting is talk about the legislature next year, you know, I can say that right now. There's nothing really too pressing on the horizon legislatively. Um, but if people do have things they wanna talk about or possibly get before the legislature. Uh, we can talk about that, there is um. One um. Engineer who has put forward a bill proposal. That we'll be talking about at the meeting uh, next week to see if we. We wanna move forward on that, so.
They're back there.
Yeah. I guess the most um, pressing thing this year we've had. Is in the court arena. We were approached by um, an attorney. Who was representing two counties in a drainage matter. And he approached us um. Unfortunately, after he lost the case at the, at the district court level.
Yeah, he asked for help after he's lost.
It involved. A couple of counties that are not I D D A members, unfortunately. Um, they got in a dispute with their railroad. A railroad company.
That's fun.
Yeah, about drainage approvals.
No.
And they were doing a drainage improvement, and they sent the assessment notices to the railroad, and the railroad said. Didn't wanna pay it, they thought it was too much. Um, surprise, surprise, they argue back and forth, the railroad ended up suing them. And won. So now we have a district court decision that if it stands. Could potentially save the railroads and have to pay. So the attorney contacted us, contacted Doug and contacted me and said. I'm gonna appeal the case, I'm gonna ask Supreme Court to take it up, can you all help? He, what he said, you know, can you file a front of the court brief? Anything you all can do would be helpful. Now, I'm told that when a case, when, when the Supreme Court, the Iowa Supreme Court is asked to pick up a case. They only pick up about ten to fifteen percent of the ones that they're asked through. So when they agree to hear a case, it's pretty unusual. And they did, they did agree to hear this case.
Well, that's a good sign.
And that is a good sign, uh, you, you know, I guess from a layperson's perspective. It would seem unusual that the only reason the, the court took the case is to pat the district court in the back and say, good job. If they wanted to do that, they could have just left the decision stand. Um, so anyway, the case has been heard. Um, it was, it was argued before the Supreme Court in um. Early, earlier September. Um. I did go watch the arguments. You can watch them online, but I like to watch them in person. Sort of get a better feel for the room that way. You know, the. The body language of the judges and what they're saying. To each other as the case is being heard and how they're reacting to the attorneys, that's something I sort of enjoy. Uh, I'm weird that way. But I did go here, you know, and what I can say. Predicting the court is a fool's game. Um. But it did seem that they were much more skeptical of the drainage, of, of the railroad attorneys. Arguments than they were. Of the arguments that the attorney representing the drainage interest was making. Um. And I, I believe myself that. I don't think the Supreme Court. Wants to put. Drainage in the situation where we're not collecting any. Drainage improvement money from railroads, so railroads are gonna get by totally scot-free, even though they're receiving a benefit. And um, you know, wa- you know, I think one of the beautiful simplicities about drainage law. It's, it's based on benefit, or percentage of benefit. And, and if you're getting benefited more, you're gonna pay more, if you're getting benefited less, you're gonna pay less. And that shouldn't be any different for any landowner. And, you know, that's, that's the way the case was argued. Um, the, the railroad came up with some obscure. Federal law. That was passed in, I believe nineteen eighty-five, nineteen eighty-six. And basically sort of. Tried to do an expansion of that law and say, based on that law, we're exempt. Uh, from paying any kind of assessment, not just drainage assessment, from paying any kind of assessments. Well, I mean, that's a great gig if you can get it. You can exist out there and say that we don't owe anybody anything. Um. So anyway, we haven't got a decision yet, um. Supreme Court decisions are usually issued Friday of each week. Um. About eight thirty in the morning. So I always, Friday morning, I'm in front of the computer waiting for the decisions to come down to see if we get it, hasn't come yet. Um. But we are hopeful that the court will. See the wisdom of our arguments and um, and turn that decision around. Um. So with that, I'd be able to respond to any questions.
Can you say what county? Can you say what county was involved?
Is our membership dues gonna be roughly the same, or?
Should be.
And how does, how do you? The two counties that ask for help when they aren't members of?
Well, I took that to the board.
I understand, but I'm just saying, will they have to pay?
No, they don't have to do anything. Normally, we would not help counties that are not members. So, you know, you're on your own.
And that makes sense.
Yeah.
That's why we have the support.
Yeah. So I took it to the board and say, you know, what do y'all wanna do, we don't, we don't normally. Spend our money. Spend your money, uh, helping counties that don't see the wisdom of our membership and. But again, they, they felt this case was so important that we needed to be involved. Um, we are hopeful that we'll gain some members as a result of that, but that hasn't happened yet.
That's what I was gonna wonder if they, they chose to. Belly up anyone?
Yeah, not yet.
Cause, cause we just had that ruling two years ago where the railroad would have to pay for any repairs done. Now we got thrown back out.
Yeah. Well, they are persistent.
We got a lot of area to cover, so I'm sure it's to their benefit.
Well, the other thing I've heard, you know, I. You know, I have, have a lot of drainage people tell me that railroads are difficult to live with, but I've, I've heard it. Anecdotally, that it's not just drainage.
Well, it's everything.
Yeah, it's everything.
When they had to. Pull a lot of the grain by train, they just hated dealing with the railroads.
I had a county over in um. Well, I'd say I, it's not my county, but drainage county over in uh. Uh, western Iowa, they had the sewer, well, just to get their attention. So we. We would send them emails, they wouldn't respond, we would leave them voicemails, they wouldn't call us back, we, they, you know, we were trying to get them. Pay an assessment, they, you know, we couldn't even get them. Pay attention to them, they had to sue them. To get their attention, and that, that's ridiculous.
Just costs everybody more money.
Yeah.
So anything else going on out there, John, that we need to be aware of?
Not right now. Just watching the court decisions at this point.
Well, thanks for your time.
We did pick up a couple other counties, so, right?
Yeah.
Story, was it story?
No, story has been in, or not in right now, right now, I'm, I'm. Working on Dallas County. They've never been in as long as I've been around, and uh, they may, they may join. So.
Any other questions for John?
Thank you.
Good to see you back.
Yeah, how you getting along physically?
I'm getting along pretty well, I am not a hundred percent yet. But. I don't have to wear a brace.
Driving yourself?
I'm driving myself.
That's always, that's like.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I like driving, I like the freedom of driving, and I really miss that. My wife really missed it too, because she had to show for me everywhere. Um, and uh. We, you know, we got it worked out, but I uh. You know, I'm not a hundred percent, I still have some back pain, but. Considering. Well, number one, I, I was told by two doctors I was looking to be alive. So the, with the severity of, of the fall that you took onto rock. Uh, and the fact that you hit your head on rock and that you're alive and not paralyzed. He said I would put you in. Probably a one percentile. In terms of your survival of that fall.
Yeah, actually happened. What happened?
Uh, I had um. I was in, I have a deck off the back of my house. And, and the deck is separated by. About this much from a egress window well. Which is a poured concrete window well, which is about six feet deep. And between the window well and the deck, I had stacks of loose lumber. And my brain told me that it would be better to step on that lumber than it would on the grass. So I stepped off the deck onto that loose lumber and just. Was airborne. Into the window well, so I hit. About five feet down on concrete and rock and uh. Broke uh. My, one bone in my neck, four vertebrae. And. My head was pretty badly mangled.
How'd they get you out?
Well, it was sort of interesting, you know, I was. I didn't lose consciousness, which was a miracle. And I was really focused on, I have to get my phone because I have to call help, my phone was up on the deck. And I said, I've gotta get out of here to call help. And the area we live in, our. Condo backs up to a. Um, green space, and there's nobody back there, I mean, it's, you know, it's unless there are people mowing the grass, there's nobody back there. But I've gotta get my phone. Well, I didn't think about my watch, my Apple Watch.
It didn't tell you to say, cause I fell off my bike one time and it says we.
No, it was, yeah. It was automatic. It sensed the severity of my impact and it, and I was down there probably less than ten minutes. And this policeman walks around the corner and said, we got a emergency, just. First of all, he looked at me, goes, sit down, I'm sure I looked, you know, I. Head wounds bleed a lot, and I'm sure I looked at him, he says, sit down. Uh, and he said, your Apple Watch faults.
Wow.
And. E M T's on the way. And then they were trying to figure out how to get me out of there, and I said, look, I, everything's moving. I. Get a ladder down here and I'll climb, I said, you know, for you all to put a board down here. And try to lift me out on a board, six feet, unlimited space is gonna be a mess. I said, just put a ladder down here and I'll climb out, and they started. And they said, oh. That's probably the best plan, said he found a stuff ladder, and I climbed out and walked over to the gurney and. Laid down on the way we went.
You had to be in pain.
Uh, I was more in shock than in pain. Most of the pain really hadn't set in yet.
It come later than that.
But once I got in the ambulance and we got going. And, and you know, the ambulance attendant said, we're gonna give you some for that pain, and bless you.
Give me all you can give me. Well, we're very thankful.
Yeah, and I thought, eh, two or three days I'll be home, and then they started saying, well. Gotta get you at this point, and then you'll go to rehab, so I ended up. Almost five weeks in the hospital.
Yes. And be careful. Away from the window.
Yeah. I, I, I had a doctor's appointment after this was all over, and he said, you know, every Monday I get a report of my patients who are hospitalized. And he said, so I was reading through your report, and he said, oh, I said, oh, fell, can't be that big of a deal. So I started reading through it, he goes, oh my god. This is really bad.
So you had a turtle shell? Did you for a brace or? Aren't they fun?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I had to wear a brace during the day, and then at night I had to wear a neck brace. And um. For a while, I even had to wear a brace in the shower. Um.
Oh, wow.
Once I got home and got a little better, they allowed me to take the brace off when I was showering, but. At first, when I was healing. It just hurt too much to have the brace off. I couldn't stand the, I couldn't stand the pain. Um, and then once my body started to heal, you know, I, I could tolerate it much better, so. It was an interesting experience.
Well, our new house space is a green space, why don't you tell Leon, cause Leon does some stuff.
Buy him an Apple Watch.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've sold several of those. Okay, thank you all, good to see you again.
Might be going off all time.
That's true.
See you later. Alrighty, Ben. Yeah, he showed up early, so we got it going.
I've got the one official item on the agenda to. Approve the application for the uh. Trail groomers. For snow skimmers again for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six season. Uh. Paperwork's all in order, map's still the same. Insurance is updated. We have. We haven't had any issues with. The way they've moved snow, I mean, when they first started doing it, I think we had. Mike's nodding, is that? We had some trials and tribulations, I think, the first time around, but as. The seasons have gone on, like, they've gotten better equipment, we. Work better with them now and. It's been a good relationship, so.
Good. Well, I'll make that motion to approve the application for, for snow skimmers.
We have a first and a second, any word special? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, some updates that are not on the agenda, we took delivery of our dump truck.
It's the same car when you ordered it?
It's a little faded now, but, I'm just kidding, it's, it's uh. Yeah, it, it's delivered, it's up in the boat shop, um, Mike Nellis is. Running it, so.
What was the code that blew on it, if you don't mind me asking?
I never did hear yet.
Okay, oh, on the way up, yeah.
Yeah. I can talk to Lenny, but it must not have been anything too major.
It was some wire they cut when they mounted the. Equipment or something.
Yeah, I. I'll check, um. But I do not know. Uh, let's see, um. Grout Scouts has been up, they've looked at about. Eighteen locations, we're gonna have them come in and do some work here in the next couple weeks. Uh, what they end up doing is. They'll come in and crawl through some of our culverts underneath hard surface roads and tie them from the inside and then. drill pilot holes and then pressure grout any voids that are around those pipes, so. Um, it's been four or five years since they were here last. Oh, wow. Area doing some work. Uh, PCI should be getting box culvert delivered today on Iowa Avenue. They'll be set in box. That close, that project will be close to wrapping up by the end of this week, first part of next week. Uh, Gosh Park Road, we started peeling material and pulling it towards shoulders late last week. So if you guys are out and about driving in your south of town, you'll see a couple of maintainers and our Humboldt shop working on that project.
Chaping that, removing that ditch.
Yeah, yep. We'll be moving that ditch and basically making wider shoulders.
Okay.
So. Um, the other two shops are doing similar things, only we're blading the material out into the field where we're allowed.
Um, back slopes and fence lines and so.
Cleaning ditch, yeah.
How much higher do you go with that slope? Like an, like an Anderson's property there, doesn't look like much of a slope. Do you go higher?
Yeah, so for the, the location that you're talking about there, a lot of that was just trying to reestablish a ditch bottom uh, over years between wind blowing and farming practices that the ditch got filled in. And we lost the right of way line. So that particular clean out was more about just trying to reestablish our right of way and positive drainage away from the road and on that one, the farmer was happy for it because he wanted
Yeah.
a spot for the water to run away from his field too, so.
Roy's got water there all the time.
Yeah, it's just, it's poorly drained, maybe in that spot, but that's.
Is that the worst on Hardy there?
Uh, south of Hardy.
Right to the east to west of me. Oh, on the corner there. Okay, right across Craig Wiggins. Oh, gotcha, just south.
Just south there. Um, but we're out staking right away so that our county crews can keep doing similar projects to that. So most of these are spot locations that have been called in by the farmer requesting us to be there, or we see it as a positive for secondary roads to be there.
True.
Um, Murray Bridge update. We have approved preliminary plans through the DOT. They're in the process of doing the hydraulic review. Sure, the bridge is big enough for the amount of water that goes through there. Um, we will be applying again for the raise slash build grant this year. Um, we had our,
Cooper counties.
There's seven of us as part of a group for the application. The last go around, we were denied, but we received uh, very high marks on every category. And when we had our debriefing meeting, the gal presenting, she said, I've never seen one that's gotten very high marks that didn't receive funding. She goes, I think what obviously just happened is there wasn't enough funding. And when you look at it, when it switched from, from Biden to Trump administration, they cut like eighty-five percent of that raise grant funding out and
Yeah.
so that's where we just, we fell off the list for that. So hopefully.
I was hoping it wasn't something in one of each other's seven counties. It wasn't qual, really qualified project or something.
Yeah, no, it, 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 it sounds like, uh, like I said, we got really high marks on, on everything. And so, um, but we're still slowly grinding through with uh, um, beyond that, applications for the physician, I think that ended on Friday. Last I knew, we had decent number of applicants, so we'll start diving into those here this week.
That means great.
Yep, one in each shot.
So.
Very quiet.
Other than, yeah, very, very quiet.
We let them fly, quiet, quiet.
Yeah.
Oh, that's weather's good.
The, the, the weather, nice crops coming out. Uh, it's a nice time of year. Everything feels like it opens up. So intersections become more open and easier to see traffic.
Yes.
Um.
You can see the dust in morning, not necessarily see, you just see the dust, it's so.
Well, I stopped in that the other day when we looked at that eighty eleven level three and we found that
Yeah.
foreign tile that went up. It doesn't show it on the maps. It doesn't show it on Beacon, but the old maps that we have in his office shows it. Um, how do we approach getting updated on how to encourage them to, to find all these? Cause that's just one instance. So that tile was a county tile? Yeah. It didn't show it on any of our maps, so we're on Beacon. And Mike, the, the farmer swore he in eighty-five, they shot it up through there and there's a big intake up in the ditch. So unless we hooked onto a private tile, there was no way for that water to get to our name. So I started hunting and turning over rocks and I went into Bennett and said, hey, who just looked at this? And we found it and it was handwritten in. It looked like it was handwritten on that.
So prior to these nice digital color maps, there was an old.
Black parchment.
Part, yeah, it looked like, it did. It looked like parchment paper. Uh, but I think it was, it was originally done in seventy-seven and then it was updated in nineteen ninety. That's the one that had it, was the nineteen ninety map.
So was it an improvement maybe that was?
Never added?
Was, I, I, it was, it was an improvement that was done in eighty-six?
Yep.
I think.
How do you know by that map that it's a county name?
Cause it showed, it only, that map only shows county values.
Got it.
That's eleven lot three?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we looked at uh, scanned hanging plans for that section and they had additional notes written in and pencil on the ones from the hang.
As build pieces.
So.
It was just, it just shocked me that without going there, I would have went by what we had and know it is ours when it is ours, so.
Is it functional?
Yeah, I think there was an issue out in one farmer's field, um, where there was a hole in, in the field and he was bound to determine it was a, a county tile, but our maps didn't show it, so Mike was researching whether or not it was in fact, a, a county tile or not, and it looks like it is.
There's a twelve and a ten running side by side. Depends ours or twelve is private. It's just crazy, but that's the way it is, so.
Well, it does happen.
On the feet. On that section line, you go up north and see the edge of the cornfield and it's on the field next north of there and line up and you can see this, it's clearly on the right hand side, so with them two runs side by side, the tens on the right hand side, it was more likely ours. Whoever fixes it, we got that. Yeah, yeah, they're aware of it, so we'll see.
So we probably just need to get it added to Jake's West regards next maps that they come on.
Anything else?
Nope, that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good.
Alright then.
Thank you.
Well, mistakes for the agenda is items. So there's many reports.
You, are you in a hurry to go? Cause I got quite a bit.
No, you go ahead. I don't have, I don't have anything. Oh, no, I did too. I had Board of Health on Friday the tenth.
I meant to say you're going.
I know. Yeah, I know. I got till nine thirty.
Okay.
As long as I'm gone by nine thirty, I'm good.
What date did you say?
I'm here.
The tenth. Right, Friday the tenth.
Daughter.
Okay.
She's gonna be my backup team for.
Oh, I was gonna say, I was on the, I was like, what?
Wait a minute, yeah.
I just sent her a text and said, listen, I need help with, she's got a request for, for uh, the program I've been trying to set up and I didn't want to screw this all up, so. Anyway.
We'll do that work session, right?
In session.
Hang on a minute, what's up?
Yeah, I don't know why it was down there, but.
I'm.
All right, full money.
Sorry.
Oh, well, yeah.
On Tuesday, I went to the, down to Lizard Creek.
Off there.
The renewable en- energy workshop um, was from five till sevenish. Uh, I don't know. I'm gonna wait and see what everybody else says, so I don't step on my self here. Um, I wasn't, some of the things that, comments that were made, I, I'm, I'm just kinda questioning, you know, when he said, well, everybody could have their own power source, like, we could do all, all of us could do, um, the not the windmills, but the
Solar.
Solar. We could all attach them to our house. Well, if we all did that, do you think that, that power companies would be able to absorb that much? I, I, I think it's kind of a far-fetched idea, but I didn't say anything cause I didn't wanna start a argument. I already got scolded when I made a comment that when you do that through your roof, then your roof leaks and he got mad at me, so.
Oh, on the solar?
Yeah.
Probably a smart ass.
Yeah, he called me a smart ass, so.
Where did it go?
Hard to believe that I would make a comment like that and rile him up, but he was a little feisty, so. Um, the other thing, on Thursday, they had the mobile food pantry. I got numbers from Diane. They had a, had a good uh, day for, got rid of almost all of the food. They had, um, hundred and fifteen families in Humboldt drive through three hundred, or hundred and fifteen families, three hundred and twenty-four members. Humboldt Homes had forty-seven families, fifty-nine members. Livermore had twenty-six families, fifty-two drives or family members total for a hundred and eighty-eight families and four hundred and thirty-five members. They had thirty-two volunteers in the next mobile food pantry at December the eleventh. So we got rid of all of like a couple of boxes, so that was, it was a good day, beautiful day to be outside, so we had a win-win there. Um, on Friday, I met with Mick Daggy up here on, if you go straight north on the Radio Tower Road where it curves and goes back to the west, uh, right where Grove and, and Rutland Township come together. There's an inlet or a intake in the fence there. I got some pictures. Mick thinks that's a county tile that comes across underneath the trail and there's water standing still. He's got like ten acres north of there that he can't get combined. So, um, he's interested to know if we could, he could get left up here to, to work on it. Um, but in the map, it shows that it's, uh, there's a county tile that runs over that direction, but I'm not sure if that's our inlet or that's private tile. So Saturday morning, Kenny Nielsen was up and across the fence on the other side combining, so I went over and bothered him. And Kenny thinks that that's private tile, cause he is going to, when they get their corn out, he's gonna put a go up to that thirty-six that's north of.
North of there.
The, up there, but Kenny said there's back years ago when Charlie was alive, there was a couple of cisterns that were closed out there on his property. And he said, I'm not sure that, you know, everything was done according to plan, so I guess.
They call some cisterns are really junction boxes.
Right, well, the old school.
The old school, they look like cisterns.
Yeah, that's what he said. We climbed down in them, yeah, and whatever, but Kenny just said that's what they classified them as, so anyway, um, we can talk more about this off camera, so don't take forty-five minutes, but I got it on my map. I got some pictures and we'll try to discuss it. All right, listen, now for you, the county is trying, or this, the hospital, you wanna just do this?
Yes, I sure can.
Sure.
Um, okay, so I am the quality director at Humboldt Hospital and um, we are currently working with the EMA um, management to put on a disaster, um, multiple casualty incident. Um, and so the whole county is kind of pulling together a um, scenario and uh, we are to the part where we're looking for some volunteers. So, um, we are, I sent my data link. He has a little form. We're just looking for some um, volunteers that could potentially participate in um, being a victim of this mass casualty event. Um, responsibilities would be to be available from about four to eight P M. on the evening of the twenty-eighth of October. Um, and if you fill out the form, um, we are trying to get the uh, requests in for volunteers by the end of the week this week. Um, we'll contact you and let you know if you are cleared to be a potential victim and then you'll be available that night. You might get some moulage on you for some um, fake wounds and uh, be prepared to be part of this incident planning.
This is gonna be held where now again?
Um, it's at the fairgrounds.
Okay.
You can put me down as a helper.
Bob will be a victim.
Bob, would you like, would you like your um, just cell phone as primary point of contact? I have that information already, so.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay.
You can put me down also.
Mike's willing to play the game. Well, I mean, I.
Yeah.
And you know, your old man, ain't gonna get out of it, so.
Who's gonna pick you up?
I wanna see the ambulance crew say, I'm not picking him up.
People picking you up.
Can you imagine if I was like John, falling down in a six-foot egress window?
Head hurts.
We'll take a crane to lift him up.
It might not be pretty, but we get it done.
Um, so this is going out, so they can reach out to you at the hospital or how do the, if someone's listening to this or sees this, April's gonna run a, probably in the paper, but it has to be in by Friday.
It has to be in by Friday, so I will um, see if I can grab this link form and I can put it in the chat and you can include that as well in your minutes.
Rick's already walking with the cane, so.
There you go.
Well, and you said you needed how many people?
Um, well, we're not gonna give, we're not gonna give a number in public, cause we don't want our, we don't want our um, people inside to know, but we will, we will get back to anybody that um, we could utilize as a victim. Yep, we will reach back out to you.
Perfect. Thanks for your time.
If I'm available.
Very much.
Be down. I just don't know. I'm here and there.
Yes.
That works.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all I had.
Board of Health, that's Friday, the tenth. That's it.
Tuesday, I had renewal energy workshop with these guys. And I'll keep my comments for myself too, cause well, no, I won't. I didn't get a lot out of it, I'll be honest with you. I really didn't. They didn't answer any questions that I wanted to know about. I think they're just kind of telling us how it works and where it goes and the grid part of it, so. It wasn't, didn't benefit what I would have liked.
Well, I just don't understand how the state, it's kinda like the master ma- matrix and and accepting these MMPs. I don't have an issue with hogs and farming and whatever, but by the same token, you know, it's either just take this and you're gonna put them in your county and if you don't like it, we're still gonna put them in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, the state's gonna come in and they're gonna get the legislative.
If you say no, the state will, yeah.
And I don't want a bunch of hate mail about, either way, I'm just to the point where, but it's like, if you wanna put them on your, these panels on your roof or in your yard, go for it, but.
It's a landowner decision.
Uh, Wednesday I had the Moffett meeting. Where they, we, they have um, sixteen thousand, their checking account, they got a hundred and forty thousand in Edward Jones. Uh, sixteen thousand, their checking account, they got a hundred and forty thousand in Edward Jones. That's in September, thirty-four in, twenty-three out, dogs twenty-two in, twenty-eight out. October so far is one cat in, seventeen out, which is good, and then one dog in and five out, October. Everything's just be going pretty good there.
Yeah, that's, that's organization, and I, I was in there on the ground floor. And they've kept their cash reserves pretty steady, actually it's grown a little bit.
Yeah, they're doing pretty good.
Mm-hmm, so they are financially secure.
Yep.
Which is good.
I think your donations and then the drives that they added.
They do, they work hard at it extremely.
And we got a fundraiser coming up in February at the V F W again.
Oh, yeah, they always do that.
Yeah. I don't know how that's gonna work out, because things are kinda tight this year with people donating stuff, so.
Yeah.
Uh, they had the mobile food pantry. On Thursday. And then Saturday, I met with Ron Thompson on D D thirty-three, he's got several sinkholes in his field, probably like. Hmm. Six of them, but the tile is broken, you see the clay tile. So I'm gonna have, um.
What, what's strange, this is.
D thirty, they got D D thirty-three, Grove Township. And also I wanna look after John Tilton also, pretty much in the same area, same. So. That's what I did.
Okay, on the seventh, I have renewable energy for Dodge, with these counties, um. I, you know, I think they're just trying to be forthright with us, because we, everything's what, fifty counties that don't have. A zoning that's not allowing them to come in, and I think they're just. The legislators are, are kind of tired of hearing the background coming from the renewable energy people, so they're going to do something about it. And that's what my feelings have been all along, but I think we're to that, to that precipice, but that's just my thoughts. Um, on the eighth, I had a, that's a small business, state small business credit initiative, there's a bunch of. Of financial institutions that are out there to help you get, if you wanna start a small business, they will help you get your down payment. Um, some of them are pretty, pretty substantial, cause one, the last one that they, that they come up with would, would guarantee you up to two, twenty million dollars. They'll give you twenty million, two million dollars, it's about eighty minutes you wanna go. It's absolutely, it's, it's interesting. Look, going through that, in that meeting, it's a long meeting, and, and, but it was, there was a lot of information. Then the ninth, uh, the fairgrounds, eating out food with these guys, and, and um. Mike Jacob, or that farmer had a tile issue up north, and I went up to that and took care of it, stopped and talked to Ben that day, so that's, that's my.
It was Alyssa.
Yeah, Alyssa was the one that invited me to it, I got three or four things that she invited me to, that it's, it's getting a picture of what's on that side of the table.
Yeah.
It's just another viewpoint that I.
There are, there's, there's funds out there, but you've gotta hunt hard for them.
Yeah.
And it's tough to qualify and.
Some of the interest rates were real reasonable, if one of them was three percent or something, something over that, that's not bad. Yeah, so some of these small places that uh, that want to get started, may haven't got the down payment, it gives them an avenue to, to get in there and do it.
Yeah.
Just, like I said, it's fun to go to these things and look at what's out there.
Yeah.
I never would've thought to even look for that before. Just opening up a new, a new uh. Idea.
Yeah. Already, I, Tuesday, I went down to the. Renewable enju- energy thing. My biggest takeaway from that is the tax revenue. It. It's so. One-sided.
One-sided, it is.
There's, I don't know of any other industry in this, in the state that gets that kind of a deal where. Forty years locked in, their, their property tax or utility tax, or whether it would fall under, it's probably property tax. Is locked in for forty years.
That's crazy.
Yeah, and in forty years, they're gonna be still bringing in big cranes busting up your roads, making a mess. And there'll be a burden actually on the county rather than an asset. Because they won't be paying squat for property tax, if you think back to what your house property tax was forty years ago. That'd be nice to be paying what I paid forty years ago.
Yeah.
So, the state got screwed over on that deal they did with the renewable energy, in my opinion.
Yeah, I agree with that.
It's too late now. So. That's all I got.
I also, I forgot, Wednesday, I ran out to the Lego.
Oh, did you go up there?
Oh my goodness. Um, well, first off, it's been too nice for these little kids to go into Sheldon. To sit inside, cause they're in school all day.
And they look out the middle.
They eat supper quick, and then they go back out, and then they're supposed to build these models, um, and they were just. Like climbing the walls, when I got out there, they were running around outside, but there was several of them inside left, so I went in. And they had several little models that they had done, and then they hook up these little motors. They can make them work, well, my grandson had one that. He hooks it up and, and it's like one wheel's going forward and one wheel's going backwards, and it's like. It's not moving, I said, well, I don't think it's going to, because the wheels are going the opposite direction, and he's like, oh, okay, and he walks off, but. Like, man, if you can't do it that way, we, and so, but anyway, this week, if you got time, they're gonna be out there on Wednesday night, so. Um, there are a lot of, when I went in there, I was asking these, this one little kid, I said, so, what is this? This is a Lego club, we build all kinds of neat things, these are, his eyes were just, so they. They've been averaging good numbers, and they're very appreciative towards the park people. For allowing them to use that building, and it's just, but like I said, they were just. Nice weather, they were having a hard time concentrating at this.
Those ages, that's boring.
Um, grade school up, I don't know how high they go, but most of them are in like third to. Fifth grade, fourth grade, somewhere in there. Yeah. What time is Sheldon? Sixth classes.
Yeah.
So, and then they're gonna take a break. Or, like the fall, through possibly into. Um, past Christmas to give them a little time away, cause they're. Pretty high-strength, no, but it's pretty interesting, and some of the designs, you know, they're just like this little truck that. And it's just the, had a motor, had this motor on it, and then these two little, like, almost like jumper cables, and they hook it up to this motor, and this. Started spinning, and it's like, man, but they ain't gonna work, cause it's. But anyway, it was fun. That's with all of mine.
Yeah, well, anything else for board?
I'd make a motion to adjourn, and we can go to our work session.
Second.
Okay.
Favor?
I.
Very, your turn. Okay, all righty. Anybody, you're gonna take off?
I gotta take off, um, I don't know if you need this or not, this or my committee's gonna throw it in the drawer when you're done.